I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Special sessions are only for plot is on the agenda. We do not vary from that. So what we have before us is an opportunity to look at the structure and organization of our landfill. Myself and other commissioners individually has been working on that with our great staff that's put quite a bit of time into this. So what we have is the potential for hiring the landfill superintendent, reorganizing that operation out there as it has become apparent that as we're trying to make this work for the next sixty years, sixty-plus years, is to be able to make sure it's operated for the future growth of Lake County. Very appreciative of our road supervisor, Devin Hawk, and the work that he's done. This has no reflection on whether he's able, skill level, or anything. It's just that being a department head over two departments, it takes sixty hours a week for both of them. He doesn't have enough hours in the day. So Kevin, I don't want you, and we've had that discussion, but I don't want anybody or the public to think that anything hasn't been done very well. So appreciate my stem. So what I've done is worked with Jay, brought forward to the board a job description for landfill supervisor for Lake County landfill. That would be a full-time position. Transition time, absolute transition time would be July 1st for budgeting purposes. Until July 1st, we would be doing, going through the hiring process side by side with Kevin. Kevin would still be doing landfill management and helping whoever we hire to transition over. Come July 1, we should be set up where that it would be totally standalone. That doesn't mean that the road department with their half isn't going to be involved. We cannot operate this landfill without the cooperation of and the teamwork of the road department. We have the cooperation plan. We have the landfill closure plan, compliance DQ, stormwater, and I'm just hitting some of the highlights that Kevin have all the expertise to help train the next person. So Kevin and I have sat down and talked about the salary structure on his side of it. And if we can take our best shot making this successful, I don't want to speak for him, but he's told me he's 150% wants this to be successful itself, and he will help make that happen. So I guess the uniqueness of public meetings and everything, we need to, I need to hear from the rest of the board. For me, it's pretty simple. I'm there to restructure and do this. It's not, whenever I say restructure, it's not a lot different. We're paying a full-time superintendent to do a job. And right now, we're partially paying a full-time superintendent. That's pulled two different ways. So questions, thoughts?
I think it's a great idea. I think we need to take the burden off Kevin and have it so it's, we could have different hours for our employees out there so they can have days off in a row and keep our people. Like I said before, you know, we're going to be competing with other people on employment, you know, as time goes on. And I want the people that are employed by the county to love their job. And so I think it's a good thing all the way around.
So this is, this will have moving parts. You're working on the scheduling as a department head is hired. That's whenever you will get that brought down to the refinement that it needs to be working with that department head because they have to be a player in on that. But you have skills on that. So that's work in progress. There's other things work in progress that Kevin already had in place as far as equipment out there, some equipment that needs to be bought, transferred from the road department. Kevin and I had that discussion. So if we make this decision, there's a lot of work yet to be done. It's not as simple as it's, we made this decision and it's going to take a lot of effort from a lot of different people. So there will be moving parts. We'll finalize salaries and those things as we work together. Jay will need right away, work with us and have a salary range for the superintendent. Right now, we have a roundabout and it's not to be adopted today. But I think that what we need to do if we make a motion is accept a salary range that when Jay does some comparables of where it should be at. And one reason why this is pushed pretty fast by me and everything is because we're at a budgeting time. We need to go and get, Kevin needs to know what are we doing on the budget? How are we going to do this budget? Ann needs to know, we as board of commissioners, we, it's going to take a little bit more transfer from general fund. And so we have to figure that out.
So I will just say it from a budgeting standpoint, we have the ability to modify budgets throughout the year. So don't rush into a decision on the face of the budget. We can, we can modify and adjust and change budgets as needed over time. So.
So we're not rushing into decision because of budget. We're making the decision based on operations of landfill and for the longevity. Budget is a part of that, and we're sensitive to the budget side of it because of.
We're making a drastic change here.
Yes.
Drastic.
So, well, the dollars, it's not a drastic change.
It is.
But basically, in my opinion, if you think, we're asking a department head to be that fourth employee at a reduced cost and take on those duties and be a full-time roadmaster at the same time. We're restructuring with the same number of employees just paying for them. Right now, Kevin is putting into number of hours that it takes to keep that landfill going.
Because you have an employee retention problem because of hours.
Yeah. I just wanted to touch real briefly on the fact that some of the, some of these numbers aren't actually accurate because they don't, we didn't plug in for the 1920. We didn't plug in a stipend for Kevin. And I would think that if we hired another landfill superintendent, that you would still have Kevin out there as that person in the ropes because Kevin's put in an enormous amount of time learning the process of landfills. And I just don't know who you.
So visiting with Kevin and not to get too far into all the salary structure until we get absolutely finalized is, the stipend stays the same until July 1. After July 1, we should hopefully have the people hired and all that. And Kevin will still be doing work for the landfill.
But are you saying that in the fiscal year 1920, there'd be no stipend?
At this point, at this point, no. If Kevin had to spend extra time out there with the road department, charge back to the landfill, there's very much possibility there.
Is that realistic though, being that Kevin's put in the amount of work that he has, that we could expect a landfill superintendent by July 1 to have all the pertinent knowledge needed to operate that?
No, they will, no, they will not have all the pertinent knowledge if we build a department head. I don't think that our salary structure will leave or that we're going to attract somebody from another landfill operations. I believe that our landfill manager slash road superintendent right now is comfortable with the direction we're going to just onboard with this.
So is the idea behind hiring the landfill superintendent from a budgetary standpoint of taking some of the dollars from his stipends to go into paying the landfill superintendent?
Absolutely.
So it's a small sum though, when you look over at the hundred thousand dollars that you're looking at overall. And I'm just wondering where those extra dollars are going to come from when, is it all coming out of the general fund?
Yes.
So that's a substantial.
General fund and operations, whenever the budget is built and as we go forward, we've been operating it from October to now.
Sure.
Our budget is not going to be accurate that we have adopted right now because we had it projected for operating it for a whole year. So it's not accurate today. It's going to have to be re-looked at. There's many different ways to look at this. We're going to take some of that. You're saying that doesn't fund it. You're absolutely right. Is our projected cost is next year going to go down? We don't know. We're going to work on that. Is our projected revenue going to go up? We don't know. We're going to work on that. As we put that budget together, we will have those projected revenues, those projected costs, and see what the transfer from general fund is for the operations of the landfill.
So for this current year's budget, and Ann and I kind of already discussed this when last April this time, we were putting it together on a, this brainstorm and infancy of taking over landfill. Then we went from July to October 1st extension with the contractor. So there's revenue during that time period that the county did not get. Contractor got it. But during that time, there was also, well, I hate, I don't like to say savings, but we didn't have the personnel expenses going out during that time either because our first employees for the landfill didn't actually start until shortly after Labor Day. So there are some, we didn't have revenue during that time, but we also didn't have expenses during that time.
I suppose, I'm just, I see it, I see it impacting the general fund in a very heavy way, hiring the actual superintendent position and making this leap forward and just kind of, I'm not entirely sure I'm easy with when you consider the fact that, you know, most of the issue that we're having is a retention issue with the employees based on the hours. And Kevin Hawk presented an option that would kind of help solve that issue early on without impacting the general fund to this degree. And so that's kind of where I'm at still. I'm not entirely sold on this idea of hiring a full-time superintendent without any, any dollars punched in for Kevin as a stipend because I just don't see the individual being able to come in and take over that entire position that quickly by July 1. And the argument used that we're going to use those dollars from the stipends to go into the, to go into paying that person's salary, especially for the first year, doesn't pencil out because I don't think that you're going, you're still going to see those dollars going into the stipends.
So you're, you're saying that all we need to do is carry.
I'm just saying that.
Carry on the stipend.
I'm just saying that you're going to see a larger impact on the general fund than what you're seeing here because you're taking away the stipends. But I don't think that that's realistic because the stipends is still going to be there. I have, just, this is just my thoughts. And so I think it's going to be a larger impact on the general fund than this is presenting.
Right now, today, as we're operating today, and we, I do not have the numbers, but we're backfilling it, which will be general fund dollars to pay for road department employees to operate the landfill. That's the only way that we're able to operate today. We have, I don't want to put the names out there, but more than Kevin out there. And there has to be a transfer from general fund with, landfill is general fund to the road department to cover those wages. So when you're talking about the stipend and all this, you're talking about one person, it's truly not a stipend. He's getting paid as part of his job description when he's hired to be the landfill manager.
Yes, but those dollars are coming out of the landfill, correct?
Yes, they are. And whenever we hire an operator for a day to go out there and work the landfill, we pay their wages at the road department salary wages all the way through. There's a cost for doing business at the end of the day. This will put all the cost in this, this one, one fund. There will still be transfers for road department work done out there. We cannot operate that landfill without, all county departments, it's all county, but just different funding without the road department. There, we have $600,000 there for landfill closure, and we're going to build do that in-house with the road department. We have an operation plan that is open up new pits. Those new pits, we will utilize the road department. We will backfill those and we'll pay them for that. Where you're getting to is one individual and, but everybody's calling a stipend, which is really part of his salary. It's not a stipend. He gives a salary by his job description for managing landfill. And it's a small portion of his overall salary. So you're concerned that he will still be doing the landfill work as road department and not getting paid for it.
At least for the first year, if you look at these numbers, because that's, that's my issue.
And so.
I'm still seeing him spending time on the landfill.
So the way to address that would be to continue on with paying, paying that as assistant to the landfill or whatever, and then just pay for it.
And that's fine.
That impacts general fund to pay that.
That's fine. I'm just saying that would, if you, if that, if you plug in that number, then you would, you would see a larger impact on the general fund.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So that's, that's all I'm saying.
Absolutely. Is that your recommendation of putting a number there?
No, it's not. I'm just bringing, just for discussion, I just wanted to kind of bring that forward.
Okay.
That I think it would be, realistically looking at it, I would, I would imagine there would be a larger impact. But overall, I'd actually kind of, I agree that most of the issue that we're, we're running up against right here, like Ann stated, it's more of a retention issue than anything else. And I think that is solved by the hours that the employees have to deal with. I don't see the hours in front of me that Commissioner Albertson presented and was able to work out. But I think largely that's, that's what you're going to have an issue with hiring additional employees is because the way the hours are right now, I'm not sure you're going to be able to find too many people that want that.
Well, I don't want to speak for Mark, but I know he's working on it. There's been some uniqueness in just our lives here the last week. So he hasn't been able to put all the time in on it. But he can't put that absolute day, I, you'll get you, I'm just going to throw out, he's got to work closely with Kevin. He's got to work closely with the contractors out there.
Do we have a proposal for the addition, for the new hours? Do we have that figured out, what, what new hours would be? Or are we just talking about hiring another person? Or do we have?
Kevin can decide if we're going to hire another person.
Well, I agree. But I mean, like, we have, have that proposal in front of us today. But do we have any room to discuss what the hours should be and what you were thinking the hour?
It would be up to this landfill manager, what their hours are going to be. But what I, what I have is.
I kind of wish it was up to me, to be honest.
Well, that was kind of where we were at last week was the landfill, the guy brought us what he thought the hours should be, and we rejected it. And so that's kind of where I'm at is I would imagine that it would be up to him. And that was where I was at last week was when I kind of stated, I think we should just take it for what their word is. These are the boots in the ground. These are what they think they need. So we should go that route. But if, we're not going to fix the hours issue, which I think is where we're having most of the problem. The employees don't take, the employees want to have two consecutive days off or three, or however you were originally kind of working on those hours. I'm fine with whatever works, honestly. But what I'm looking at today is just a proposal to hire an additional person that's going to cost $100,000. And for the most part, it's all coming out of the general fund. I'm not seeing a solution to the hours issue. And so.
Something like last week when we talked about this or two weeks ago. These guys are working on a skeleton crew. There's nobody to believe, anybody of somebody's gone. And so the road department's got to fill that. So no matter what the hours are, they're short one person.
But is, is that a bad thing if the road, if they have people at the road department that can fill those positions? I mean, I kind of feel like it's kind of a good melt with the road department. Like you say, it'll never be fully separated because you're going to be needing equipment.
Okay, hold, hold on here before we get the train going too fast.
Go for it.
So here during this winter functionality to support the landfill with road department employees is fine. But once we get into summer operations, that is not an option in any way, shape, or form.
For what?
For supporting the landfill's efforts with employees on schedule.
Gotcha.
Absolutely not an option. Zero option. The gates will close because I don't have the people. Today, since we're talking about today, we'll talk about today, Nathan McLean, Casey Lehman, Christie Horn, all to landfill. She then is going to take another person who has stepped forward to want to learn how to do the scale house attendant. And at 11 o'clock, she's going to take that person to go to Paisley to show them how to do that operation so that we have an extra person that can float. And yours truly is going to go run the scale house for the remainder of the day.
Yeah.
This is a reality that's in front of us right now. So you guys know.
That's the main reason I'm going to hire somebody because otherwise, we're going to continue in for now. Is that true?
I mean, in theory, I was going to try to avoid going backwards on the schedule because I understand everybody's conflicted on this. But when you have people that can be scheduled in what I presented, with three consecutive days off, a lot of which are Saturday and Sunday because of the way we can rotate those three people, you don't have people burning sickly. And you have the availability as an employee to schedule your dentist and your eye doctor and your whatever on a day that's not a scheduled workday, which minimizes the impact on the road department support. I guess I could throw this out there. There's other general fund employees that could go to the landfill today instead of my road department guys. I mean, like we said, we're all county. So the road department is making it happen only because the oversight is there for me. And I have control over that. I could call Dave and say, hey, what are your two guys doing today? We got to go to landfill. We don't, we don't want to go there. We don't want to be in that environment. I don't know if I am articulating this correctly or not, I guess, but.
I think you're, you're making a very good point, Kevin, is the landfill can't continue to be operated through the road department. The road department will be a partner forever for the major work.
And it has to be.
That's scheduled and able to be done.
Scheduled is the key there.
But for the day-to-day operations of landfill, it does not fit for the road department. It just does not fit. We basically have a skeleton crew at the road department.
Yeah. Right now, right now, I'm doing flood repair after this recent event with three less people than what I normally would do because we're operating landfill.
Yeah. We're going through some growing pains. There are dollars attached to those growing pains. You know, all options are possible. I mean, I really believe we can figure this out and we make the best service for the public. Make the best we can do for operational. If it doesn't work out, and I do not want to go here, maybe the option is contracted back out. But that's not where I'm at. That's the last thing I ever want to do. But we're trying to make this work for all parties involved. And if we only do it for one party, whether it's the contractors, or it's the general public, or it's the employees, we're doing it wrong. If we look at this for overall operations and with a vision, not about today, but a vision of the five-year plan, your 20-year plan, of what it, where it's going to be, well, this next budget year, we'll make it tight. Absolutely. What's our projections in the next five years on our general fund budget and on our landfill budget? Sometimes we do have to make those hard decisions and take some knocks. And we prioritize, prioritize as a board of commissioners of where we're going to go. For me, I prioritize. I no longer want Kevin to be extended the way he is. Does he have the skills and ability? Absolutely. Do I think he's going to trade being roadmaster and become the landfill manager? I think not. His skills are more refined over here.
Sure.
And so.
I agree with that. I, I guess it's just a question of hiring this additional person that's going to cost twice as much as, as the, as one of the average employees. And we seem like we're shorthanded. It doesn't say, I think Kevin would spend less time out there.
So.
If he wasn't, if he had more people that were able to operate.
So does the operations of the landfill dictate and demand to have that number of employees to operate efficiently?
What do you mean?
Does it need another person out there?
I would say eventually, yes. And I think that's where I'm actually 100% in agreement. But I'm just questioning whether or not it's needing an actual superintendent at this price, or whether or not we should fix the hours and just hire an additional person that we can rotate and give the hours.
So you're still hiring somebody?
Yes, but not for the same amount. And that's, that, I guess that's kind of where I'm at.
And you don't take any burden off Kevin. If you hire another person, you're not taking any burden off him. He still has to.
For, for objectivity reasons, let's say the landfill manager and leave my personal name.
Yeah.
The landfill manager.
Sure.
But, well, the road supervisor would still be burdened with a heavy burden.
So.
Correct? Yeah.
So, and, and we're getting way down in the weeds a lot of different places. But as I've tried to work on this, and I've spent quite a bit of time, could have spent a little more time with Kevin, but he's been busy too. But the discussion we had is the operational plan, even what is contracted out, said that there would be four employees out there.
Correct.
The 20-year contract that was with the contractor that actually could never, well.
They couldn't sustain it that way.
Yeah, it wasn't, I mean, it wasn't followed by him was to have.
Yep.
Four, four people.
Yep.
The, the, the talking point that we had before we entered into this was that we're going to start with this amount of employees and grow from there as projected revenues based off the tonnages per year continue to come in. But there will always have to be adjustments to any aspect of it to ensure that it's successful and the cost is low.
Well, I guess I, I kind of like, Jay, what do you think about this? I mean, it's from your perspective. I know you've put a lot of work into putting, to punching a lot of these numbers in with Ann and trying to figure this out. I'm just kind of curious to get a little bit more input. From a personnel standpoint?
I don't know.
Mm-hmm. Okay. That's fine. I'm just, just curious.
I, you know, we've, we've talked about it a lot. So I think you all know where I'm at.
Are we making a decision on this today?
I would like to, yes. Based around trying to, best shot is to try to have the best transition by July 1 as we can. And we're talking about advertising a superintendent position, hiring process. If we select somebody as a board of commissioners, them to generally have figured, they're going to give two weeks' notice. So it's mid-April, be advertised next week, couple of weeks. We're talking, we're right into Kevin's busy time of the year right now. We're talking, we're, we're right into Kevin's busy time of the year right now. So there has to be some very aggressive work done. And so I think it's time sensitive myself. If we're not going to reorganize, if we're gonna continue as we are, we're gonna have to get pretty aggressive on that side too.
So Kevin, so when you came to us with wanting to have Sundays off, close the dump, or close landfill on Sundays? Was it gonna be closed Sundays and Wednesdays? Well, how, how did you have that planned? What was your thought?
The schedule I gave you guys on Tuesday?
Yeah.
Tuesday through Saturday operation.
So it'd be closed Sunday and Monday?
Correct.
So what if we closed it Monday, Tuesday?
Can't do it that way. You're, you're cutting off, you're cutting off and, and, and here's a, a, a problem area for, for different parties that have different theories. And here's the facts about the landfill. Our vendors are who pays for landfill. No one's gonna bust a dent.
So having the closed on two days in a week.
Close it Monday and Tuesday, you're gonna force the vendors to work on Sunday in their own operations and their own business plan. And that's not probably gonna function. Cause then the rates are gonna go up. Then they're gonna have employee retention issues of their own. I mean, I, I, Kevin was here, you know, he, he mentioned all those things.
And that's getting right back to, as you're working on that schedule is you have to balance all those things, Mark, with Kevin, with other Kevin, Gary McLeese. And then, in my opinion, keeping the service to the community.
I just don't wanna close the dump on Sundays. Anyway, I don't wanna get into that again, but but I have the schedule that will work with four employees. So we're gonna have consecutive days off, whether it's whatever day that the dump's closed or the landfill's closed.
And, and this structure is a working superintendent. It's not a superintendent that doesn't go out there from running the scale house to laboring to running a piece of equipment. Their working super, superintendent supervisor, as Kevin does now.
Yeah, I mean, my operator now knows how to run the scale house. He has to. The one that we got rid of had to. He had to understand that because everybody has to know how to do that function. In the past, the reason that the contractor could cut his costs and only have one employee there, which was, which was severe, in my opinion, safety concern, but the reason he did it was because he was allowing people to weigh themselves. We cannot do that, we won't do that.
I, I know you don't wanna get into a lot of specifics on the hours and stuff, especially pertaining to Sunday. I'm still a little bit lost why we can't close on Sunday. I'm not really seeing the, the reasoning for that.
Well, we, we can get in that again. There was a motion made and a lack of a second, it died. And it, it just won't leave there.
Well, no, I, I just, I just, I'm just for discussion.
I can, I can tell you that most people don't wanna come to a public meeting. But there's a lot of people that voice their opinions to me. And I believe they have to others that they do not wanna see the landfill closed on Sunday. I myself believe that we provide a service to our citizens. Not only the people that have contracted businesses and franchises within the city limits. We have a responsibility to the citizens that put us into office for them to be able to have the services that we are governed, but on the ground. The services out at the landfill, at least we get some money back for. Whenever we put our deputies on the ground, it's all general fund with very little, no revenue coming in. And so for me, when the public comes to me and says, I want those services on the ground and Sundays, one day they want to be there. I listen. And I'm working to make that service go there. And we have this great opportunity as we are doing this. And there's a revenue source that's less impacted, services on the ground from general fund than any other general fund departments that we have. And so for me, that's where I'm at. You heard it out me, that's me individually. I'm only one commissioner, I have one vote. But, but I'm dedicated to get those services to those taxpayers that come to my office and say, I want to be able to take my garbage to the landfill on Sunday. And they're not overly concerned of us making sure that the contractors don't have to work on Sunday. We're, we're sensitive to that also. We're trying to balance, we have to do this, the best balance we can for all of them that's, that's associated.
I'm, I'm just not convinced that you're not having this service on Sunday simply because the landfill's closed. If people wanted to get a dumpster, they'd still be able to get rid of their garbage. And, and honestly, from my perspective, there's a liability issue when you have a huge amount of individual people going out there with a bag, several bags of garbage. Do we want that and do we wanna encourage that? I, I understand where you're coming from, I respect it.
So you, you want more like of a dictatorship where you can't go to landfill, you can only use.
No, 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 no.
You, you can only use contracted services to go to landfill. You are not able to go to landfill as a private citizen. What you're saying is you don't get the option. You're saying that you have to use the contracted services because we have a liability out there. Do we have a liability?
No.
We have a liability on almost everything.
That's not what I said, Commissioner.
Everything that we operate, there's a liability. We accept and minimize those liabilities the best we can.
And, and that's what I'm, I'm asking. I'm asking is whether or not we can minimize those liabilities.
Absolutely. You take, you take a look at the work that's been done out there. That in this last year, we've minimized the liabilities. We've worked from where we've been for twenty years to where we're at today, we're moving forward. And the liabilities that Mr. Hawke has taken away out there, there's always gonna be some liabilities. There's liability when somebody walks up our steps out here to our court.
I'm not saying you're going to, we have to get rid of all the liability. I'm just, I, I'm, I'm just not entirely sold on why Sunday is, is that important? And we can, we can drop it at that, that's perfectly fine with me. But I'm just not entirely sold on it. Because I see that there's advantages to having it closed on Sunday. I, and that would probably solve a lot of these issues by having the Sunday and Monday closed. We solve a lot of the retention issues with the employees and open up some other possibilities for hiring additional people. And it's not that the public would be losing an ability to dump their garbage. There's other options out there.
Why, why are we open on Wednesdays?
What do you mean?
It's not open to the public.
Well, that was something that was also proposed in the hours.
We're catering to the private sector.
Well, see.
Contractors.
Currently. Currently, but the proposed hours that the contractor would be able to dump.
And we have for years, and we have for years. So your theory of why are we open Sundays? My theory is it's for the public.
Well, I didn't set the hours the way they are right now. So whether or not you're catering to the contractor on Wednesday, that's not my.
Yes, we are, and that's part of the balance.
Well, I'm not saying you're not. I'm just saying that, that wasn't my call. Those are where the hours were set before I came along. So the way the hours were proposed by Kevin, the contractor would have the ability to do that as much as the public would. So it would even that playing field, but we decided we didn't wanna go that way. And so that was, that's kind of where I'm at. Getting back to the actual, um, hiring the additional landfill superintendent though, I just see it's a, it's a big impact on the general fund, uh, hiring the actual superintendent position. It's not about hiring just another person, you wanna have an actual superintendent. And it's just a lot of extra cost. And I, I don't want Kevin to have to spend a ton of time out there either. But one of the reasons he's spending the amount of time out there that he is right now, that the, that the roadmaster is spending out there is because he has a lack of operators. But we can't get the additional operators because the hours are the way they are. And so from my point of view, if I went for root cause, it sounds like it would be an hours issue. Not just the lack of the superintendent itself.
So I, I appreciate that everybody says it's hours and that's the reason why. I believe we've talked and there's, there's scheduling that can, can make that happen. Our jail runs twenty-four seven, three sixty-five a year. And we have employee retention there. And I do know that in today's world, everybody likes to have their weekends off. I believe through scheduling that we're able to accommodate it better than it is today. But whenever somebody takes a job and they know what the hours are and what their expectations are, they take those hours. And you work your way up until you're able to get another job or another position within the county. If you're hired and you know your hours are this, you accept that and you work this. We can do, we're, we're working the best we can to make it as close to, hopefully Mark's able to put it out there where these people consistently have three days off in a row. Isn't that awesome if you can have three days off in a row or four days and three days off? Not always is it gonna be Sunday, but they're gonna have three days off in a row. Lot of benefit, lot of benefit for employees in the private sector. You work what you're told.
You, you can't work what you're told as a government, a public employee to.
I think, I think, I think as a government employees, we have it very well, commissioners included. And we treat our employees very well. And so expectations for you to work the hours that the job is, is not an unrealistic expectation. Across our nation right now, is there a lot of people that's not willing to work? And those that are willing to work can, they can move around, take other jobs. The generation today, it's projected they'll move jobs at least five times in their life. My generation, you went to work and you retired from there. To different times, we're trying to adjust to that. We're trying to make it attractive enough for people to stay on those jobs.
I, I suppose just for myself, uh, you know, last week when we kinda went over this, I really haven't, I, I've looked at all the numbers put in front of me and I've tried to understand it. And I appreciate all the work people have done to kinda bring this forward. Just not entirely sold on it. I kinda, I kinda feel like the hours that were presented would've solved a lot of the issue. And they were what the, uh, the, um, the roadmaster kinda presented at the time that it was going to solve the issues. And he's been working on this for a lot longer than any of us have. And this is what he felt was going to, going to help him out. And I, I kinda felt that that's the way we should've gone. But I walked out of the meeting feeling that what the general consensus of the board was, that we wanted more government involved in this and not less.
More government involved, what's that?
Well, we have a superintendent that is presenting an option for a tool that they need. And when we say no, we have a better idea. Based on whatever knowledge we might have, even though we're not working out there. So from our perspective, from my perspective, it looks like the county commissioner, the board of commissioners is making a decision for what we think that our, um, department heads should have. And that's just kind of what I'm seeing here.
Well, you, you haven't listened to Brad's theory, and I'll speak only for Brad. Is, is this was our first shot at organizing, taking over the operation of landfill. And this idea may not be the one either. Doesn't make us any better than Kevin or any worse than Kevin. I brought into it the representation of all involved, not just one, representing the people of Lake County, the public. And for us, all of us are government. This is a part of government. And it's a service to the citizens of Lake County. This landfill has the opportunity to stay open for sixty years. We're dumping in the ground. We didn't pay a million dollar tour liner. We are not hauling it out. We have saved the cost to the public and trying to keep the services there the best we can.
Agreed.
And so, uh, there's many, many years invested into trying to keep this service to the people. We want all parties to look at supporting this. That's the voting people, the employees, and the board of commissioners. So we're trying to make that balance to keep everybody as whole as we can.
I appreciate that. Go ahead.
You know, we're talking about two different options here. There really is a third option, and that's to do nothing. It's to continue to see how this goes. We talked about just waiting a full year, um, see what kind of tonnage comes through in the summertime. During that time, we could survey the public, those people that are coming in on Sundays. See how difficult it would be for them to come in on other days. See how they feel given what the cost would be if, if they would support us. You know, that kind of a cost for the, for the, the service of being open on Sunday. And that's an option.
Jay, I appreciate that very much, and I'm not going to get down in that too far. That was definitely an option that I pushed forward. It was brought to a public meeting, the option wasn't accepted. Even we've talked about maybe during the winter, when the time changes, one Sunday a month. Summertime Sundays are open. There's a lot of things on the table that we can look at. The option that was pushed forward to a public meeting for possible action or decision, didn't take any of those into consideration. It was one option. That's how it got towards that today. But we still have that third option available there.
Yeah, thank you, Jay. I'm not, I'm not entirely sure we can do nothing because I'm just, I'm worried that if we do nothing, we're going to have even more retention issues. Just, just, just my thoughts on it, but.
Well, it doesn't relieve Kevin of his, doesn't relieve the superintendent of his burden. It doesn't solve the problem.
Yeah, I agree.
And I'm a hundred percent convinced that closing on Sundays would solve the problem.
I'm not even.
And here lies the door. It doesn't solve the problem of they need another person, no matter what. They have to have another person, they're shorthanded. You know, you guys were adamant about not raising any dump fee no matter what. But in reality, that's what needs to happen. And it would solve the problem by paying for, whether it's a superintendent or another operator.
For, for me, there's, there's a bit of a disconnect there. Because of, um, I'm very adamant about, we made the promise to the public, basically ten years, if we took over operations, that we could keep the three and a half cents, the pound, seventy dollars a ton there.
For how long, well, Brad?
Ten years is all we've talked about. And that's what we told the current operator and the public. I, I'm gonna honor that the best I can. I'm only one, and it was a decision made by a different board. I was one in that board. If we were in a different budget year four years ago, as we're transferring a quarter of a million dollars to a non-general fund department, would this be an issue to spend a little extra money for the operations of the landfill, keep the services there? We make tough decisions as a board. Over the years, that other department has received well over a million dollars because it's the right thing to do for that department to try to keep it operating and keep the preservation thing going. preservation thing going. We sit here as boards of commissioners to make those decisions. And we make those. During those times that we've done that, there were some general fund departments that were held static. Would they love to increase things? Absolutely. We make the decisions for the operations of the county. Right now, today, because of the revenue projections went down for general fund, we're dancing all around because of that. So let's think about what our projections for general fund should be in the next five to ten years for revenues. With the solar coming on, the potential solar, so big solar and everything, would we be able to sustain this transfer? Brad's opinion is, yes, I believe we will be able to. And at the same time, the projections of the amount that comes into the landfill by tonnage should be going up, especially if economic development happens in Lake County, it just means that more trash is going to go in landfill, even kept at the same rate. So looking past today, for the operations for the county, for the future, I look at it as, I believe it's going to take a hit this year. Yes, we got to find a way during budget time to do this. Is it sustainable? I personally believe so. There's, there's always going to be a transfer from general fund, probably to the landfill. There has been for years. Our landfill closure, our monitoring of the wells, so on and so forth. We've seen it over the years go from, and around a hundred thousand, a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty thousand, from general fund to the operations of the landfill, probably had it contracted out. It's all within that budget now. So that's what's good about public meetings, and the way it's set up is for us to build, communicate, talk, debate, to get to decision. It's all in public setting. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to accept the landfill superintendent position and the job description as presented. With that, the salary range will be finalized through our business department, as there's some comparables there. And this will be, the hiring process will start right away, working side by side with Kevin and our human resource services. And for July one to be the date that the wage, it's been called stipend, so go ahead and call it stipend, will be rolled over into the operations of the landfill. And that stipend will not be going to Kevin anymore at that time.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Yes, Jay?
Could I propose we get that position advertised with a starting wage of sixty thousand, depending on experience? That should fall somewhere within that range, and that range can be developed at a later time, so we can get that position advertised.
Perfect. I'm sorry, I should have put, now I'm in my motion to, for it to be advertised at a sixty thousand dollar starting wage. And that salary range will be determined, where that falls in the salary range, if that's the low, and it goes above that, or if that's medium or above. Does that cover it, Jay? Do you second that amended motion, sir?
I do.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, very good discussion. We will adjourn at five minutes to ten.